Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Tran.
Here.
Councilmember Munyaton.
Here.
Councilmember Adestegi.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dovin.
Present.
And Mayor Klaffenstein.
Here. If I could have our Assistant City Manager, Matt West, lead us in the invocation and Councilwoman Munyaton, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we gather this evening, may we be united in purpose and inspired by a shared vision of progress. Let our hearts be filled with gratitude for the privilege of serving and may our minds remain open to the opportunities that lie ahead. Guide our actions with wisdom and intention, mindful of the responsibility we bear in shaping the decisions that will continue to influence the future of our city. We ask this in your name, amen.
Turn and face the altar. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to pull item number 12 from our Commission Committee Matters, which is the appointment of the Housing Authority Tenant Commissioners. We're going to pull that item. These would be applicants for Ms. Carol Beckles and Mr. Tan Nguyen. I have a second.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Congratulations to you both, and from here, we will recess to the Housing Authority and I'll turn it over to Chair Bridgum.
We'll call the meeting of the Garden Grove Housing Authority. Can we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Adestegi.
Here.
Commissioner Beckles. Commissioner Klaffenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Munyaton.
Here.
Commissioner Pete Nguyen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tran.
Here.
Vice Chair Dovin.
Present.
And Chair Bridgum.
Here. Okay, we shall move on to item number one. Receive and file the Housing Authority Status Report. Is there a...
Chair Bridgum, if you just want to call for oral communications, if anyone for the Housing Authority?
Sure, I could do that. I'm just moving right along. We'll open oral communications. Is there anyone who would like to address the Housing Authority specifically? Okay, I see no hands, I have no cards, so we will close. And now we'll move to item number...
No, currently, we just have the Consent Calendar. Receive and File the Housing Authority Status Report and Receive and File Minutes for Meetings Held November 26th and January 28th.
Entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Adestegi.
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles. Commissioner Klaffenstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Munyaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Philip Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen.
Yep.
Commissioner Tran.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dovin.
Aye.
And Chair Bridgum.
Yes.
Motion received, nine yes votes.
Item number two. Receive and File the Minutes. Entertain a motion?
So we're just moving on to Matters, we were devoted on Consent Calendar?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, alright. Did it all at once, I'm sorry. Half asleep tonight. Alright. Do we have any Matters for members? Seeing none, we will close Matters and adjourn the meeting back to the Garden Grove City Council.
Thank you. At this time, we will move on to Presentations, and we have information on the 50th Anniversary Americana Awards. It's presented by Howard Kimmerman, Executive Director of Cypress College Foundation. Welcome.
Hello, welcome, thank you so much, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. It's always great to come here to be able to see you and talk to you about your honoree, who we will introduce in a moment, and about the Americana Awards. There it is. We have recognized, this is our 50th Anniversary for the Americana Awards. It's an incredible event that recognizes Citizens of the Year from the eight cities that we work with, as well as a Person of the Year. And we've recognized 54 Citizens of the Year for Garden Grove over those 50 years. The funds that are raised from this event are pivotal for the things that we do at Cypress College. We give away scholarships to students, emergency assistance, and fund programs that aren't funded by the state of California, and there are many. And we give away more than $500,000 to just scholarships and emergency assistance alone. And the Americana Awards are very important to what we do and how we raise those funds. And as you can see, currently, we have 885 students from the city of Garden Grove who are attending Cypress College this semester. Last year, we recognized Jo Hammer, and we look forward to recognizing Dr. Tru McMahon this year. She's here with us, and I'll introduce her more in a moment. And also, our Person of the Year, A.C. Green, former NBA superstar with the Lakers in the 1980s. And he will be with us for the evening in recognition of all the things that he has done in the Orange County community with his foundation. Let me tell you a little bit more about Dr. Tru McMahon. She finds time between her busy schedule as a physician to serve her community and have fun while doing it. Tru currently serves as the Secretary for the RX Ballroom Dance Board of Directors. She is also part of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, Garden Grove Business and Education Committee, a board member with the Garden Grove Community Foundation. Tru immigrated to the U.S. from Vietnam when she was only seven years old, living in Florida, Texas, and then finally, California. She's been practicing medicine in Garden Grove where she has been a physician for over 22 years. And I'm going to show you a quick video from Tru. The sound went down all of a sudden. There it goes.
Hello, I'm Dr. Tru McMahon, Americana Citizen of the Year for Garden Grove. Please join me March 15th for the Americana 50th Anniversary Gala.
Well, you heard it from herself, you have to be there for Americana. And I'd like to invite Dr. McMahon to come up and just say a couple of words to finish off, and then I have a few more things to tell you about Americana.
Hello. Thank you, I'm not much of a speech person, I'd rather be on one-on-one. Thank you very much for this honor and for representing Garden Grove. I'm so proud to work with Howard and the Americana Award because I think it's such a great cause. And thank you for letting me serve your community.
Thank you so much. Every year, Garden Grove has always been incredible in working with us with a city basket for our auction. We'll have you put an ad to promote the city in our program, and so many of you, we were even just talking about it beforehand, come and join us for the Americana Awards. It's going to be a great event on March 15th at the Weston Anaheim Resort. And as you know, we have an incredible, oh, I'm on camera too, an incredible opportunity drawing. And we invite you to join us again this year as we recognize Dr. McMahon and the Citizens of the Year from all of our cities. So thank you for allowing us to come and talk to you about it today and honor Tru for all of her efforts in Garden Grove. And if it's okay with you, Madam Mayor, is it okay if we take a quick picture with Tru?
Please, yes.
Okay, that would be great, thank you so much.
And you'll get to see my new outside that I'm having made for that night.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Does it have to be stamped?
Yes.
You can stamp. Oh, your team, thank you. Wow, look at that. Oh, my goodness.
Oh, wow, so many phones.
There's the official phone.
There goes. Perfect. Alright, ready? One, two, three. Tran. And then we're going to do one more way. Perfect, one, two, three.
This one right here. One, two, three. One, two, and three.
More. One, two, three. The last one.
Thank you so much.
Alright, at this time, we're going to move into oral communication. I do have some pink cards. First up, Kyle Mason.
Good evening, y'all. It's been a couple of weeks. I have noticed a little bit more police activity, and I do appreciate it. I heard they arrested a couple of people, but they still haven't cleaned out down below. There's a lot of trash on the riverbed sides, and the graffiti is getting worse. I'd like to know, are they going to be able to get it cleaned up? And about the fence, from the 24-hour fitness to the Social Security. Are they going to be able to put any fences across there? And down in the sewer area for the hallway? They need to put at least a jail door, so that way, they can't get in there. Before somebody gets in there and gets hurt again. I'll make it short, I really appreciate, again, the police being around, and hopefully, they can continue to stick around in our neighborhood and hopefully, keep things a little bit quieter. But we've still got to clean up down below. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruby Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor Klaffenstein, City Council, City Manager Lisa Kim, and City Staff. My name is Ruby Garcia, and I'm the founder of the 501(c)(3), the Andy and Aiden Safety Group. And we work with law enforcement agencies to bring safety events for families of all abilities and ages. We're delighted to invite you to the Fourth Annual Communities Come Together Event in Garden Grove. This special event will be held on April 23rd from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Community Meeting Center alongside Garden Grove Police Department and the Orange County Fire Authority. We will be hosting safety stations tailored for families with special abilities encompassing all ages and abilities. This event is free of charge, and this year, we're proud to introduce water safety sessions. And for the first 10 families to RSVP to our event, will receive a free water vest from our partner, SwimBrave. In addition to new water safety station, we will continue to offer our popular stations, including interactive sessions with the Police Department and the Fire Authority. Event is at the Community Meeting Center at 11300 Stamford Avenue from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00, 7:00 p.m. And it's always a great time, and we just cordially invite you all to attend. And just to give a quick shout-out to our partners, who always go above and beyond to support us, our Hope Builders, Henry's Bar and Grill, Garden Grove Neighborhood Association, New York Life Insurance. Our thanks to community support, the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove, and then also SwimBrave. Also, a special thank you to Chief Alfara and Chief Covey, as well with Elizabeth Denny from OCFA, and Jasmine Baez, Brittany Banter, and Rena Cruz from Garden Grove Police Department. As you guys can see, it takes a village to put on these events for our families. So I'm going to let Andy sign us off.
Please go ahead and join us April 25th.
Please join us. And thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Ruby. Next up, Arnold Ortiz.
Good evening, Council. My name is Arnold. I've been living here in the community for over 30 years. The reason I'm here is I'm trying to get a little bit more guidance, kind of, on the noise control protocol. I wouldn't say policy, I'd say the protocol. Like I said, I've been living here over 30 years. For the last year, we've been having very noisy neighbors where they're having, you know, parties past the 10:00 p.m. curfew or the allowance of loud noise throughout the week. It's not just the weekends, throughout the week. I've gone to the Police Department, you know, I've kind of got, I guess you could say, basic answers where it's not helpful, it's obviously continuing. And at this point, I'm just kind of disgruntled, it's affecting my everyday life, my parents' life, their elderly. And it's just, I'm just trying to get a little bit more information on what's actual protocol. Like, I understand that police officers, they have other calls that are a little bit more urgent than noise control. But is it, is there something where like a community service officer goes like, maybe possibly Monday or a Tuesday to follow up? And is there citations being, you know, given? But at this point, it's continuing, it's not stopping, and it's, like I said, it's affecting our everyday life. And I just want to get a little bit more information on what the actual protocol is.
We actually can't have a back-and-forth conversation the way this works, so I have your information, and we can reach out to you and speak more about our ordinance policies and how we would go about that protocol-wise through our city attorney and our police department, if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you very much, your time.
Thank you.
Alright, Beatrice Eltonz. I apologize if I mispronounced that.
That's Jones.
Jones, there we go.
I don't write very well.
I know who you are, but I couldn't tell the... It looked like a T to me.
Probably did that, I wrote it without glasses.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. The subject is Black History Month in Garden Grove. An opportunity for our city's 1% African-American population to celebrate. As Dr. Carter G. Woodson, educator, historian, and publisher, second black graduate from Harvard University, said ever so eloquently, "If a race has no history, it has no worthwhile tradition. It becomes a negligible factor in the thought of the world, and it stands in danger of being exterminated." This, said the founder of Black History Week in 1926, when he established Negro History Week, that became National Black History Month in '76 when President Ford established the National Black History Month Presidential Message. That is a continuing practice still today. And 10 years later, in 1986, Congress passed a law designating February as Black History Month. Is Black History Month on our calendar in Garden Grove? President Biden's December 24th pardon of Marcus Messiah Garvey has been met with widespread acclaim throughout the United States and across the global diaspora. Garvey, creator... Oh, forgot to hold up my prop. Holder of... Creator of the red, black, and green universal African flag. Symbol of African-American unity, is revered as an iconic plant African thinker. Celebrated for his vision of racial uplift and economic self-sufficiency. Was this flag flying over City Hall? African-Americans and Labor is the 19, is the 2025 theme for Black History Month, sent by the Association for the Study of African-American History that was acknowledged in President Ford's first original message. Did the city hire African-Americans to work? One more historical note. I operated a business, so known to American African flags, here in Garden Grove for 28 years, and served the city of Garden Grove as its Unified PTA President for four years, and taught Orange County Learning Black History for five years in Garden Grove. A Garden Grove Black History Momo. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And just as a note, we did actually, on our last City Council meeting, adopt a proclamation celebrating Black History Month. So I just wanted to make mention of that. Thank you for your time tonight. Next up is Duke Tran.
Good evening, Council, my name is Duke Tran, and I have been living here for 15 years. So this is my honor to be here on behalf of my team, G.G. 3E57, following the invitation from Cindy Tran. So we all started as a small group of people, 10 members playing soccer back in 2020, and then more people joining us. But, you know, when we have more people joining us, we got attention from the park patrol. So they, you know, they pay us a visit, and they asked us to get the permit. And we didn't know how to get, to obtain the official permit at that time, so we need to share the permit with another group. And when we have more people, right now, we have, we currently have more than 70 people. So the captain and the manager of the team decided that, oh, we need to get the official permit for our own. So our captain, Mr. Hugh right there, he decided that we need to file that permit, and we seek help from Cindy. Cindy set up the meeting with Han, set up the meeting with Matt, with John, and they helped us to get the official permit. So we would like to say thank you very much for helping us. So last year, we selected our best player to play in two different leagues. One in the Vietnamese and one in Mexican league, and we won the champion title. I'm sorry that the trophy, we put it at the sponsor restaurant, Yumi Bakery. He couldn't make it today, so I don't have the trophy to show everyone. But we would try more to win more trophy for Garden Grove City. And there is just one concern, that I have been playing as a Garden Grove park for 15 years. The field is really bad right now because it has been used extensively by a different group of people. We play soccer, we play football, we play softball over there. So, you know, everyone is hurt after the game because of the tough condition. So we believe that it need more maintenance, like, just not a single annual maintenance like we are doing is not enough. So please, the mayor and the council, please come up with a solution to allocate more fund for fixing up the field. And lastly, we would like to say a huge thanks for Cindy for helping us, for dedicated her time, her support, and everything. Happy birthday, Cindy. Alright, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the pink cards I have, is anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, we have one more pink card, Nick Dibs.
Members of the, Mayor Klaffenstein, members of the Council, I'm Nicholas Dibs. I want to again reiterate to the Council the importance of civic engagement and in improving the communication between the citizens of Garden Grove and their council and mayor. Mayor Klaffenstein, I asked you during the campaign if you'd please support allowing people to call in who can't be here in person, particularly those, priority given to those who have disabilities or medical condition. I'd like to think that if I was in the hospital, or I was ill, or 20 years from now, I can't make it down here, that I'd be able to call in and share with the Council some thoughts. I've been here, as you have, all of you, and we hear the wonderful speakers, and they bring issues and concerns and suggestions. But there's a whole bunch of people out there who can't be here for whatever reason. They work at night, or they have families to raise, or they're disabled, or whatever. You could limit it, like, or do what the city of Santa Ana does, allows people, allowing people to call in, allowing people to... You could limit it to 10, if you, we didn't abuse it, it happened during the COVID time, and it was not abused. So please, I'm speaking to all seven of you, I just need one or two of you to just ask at the end of the meeting tonight to put it on as a discussion item for the next meeting, if you'd please do that. Okay, now I'm here, I sent you all an email, and for the new ones that are on the Council, they don't know, but I've been asking that our city re-establish our Youth Commission, or Youth Advisory Commission that we had in 1972, this, the Council back then established it, it went on for 20 or more years, and then it got cut. And so I'd like you to bring it back, and there's some urgent reasons why to do that, and they're in the email here. And so there's one for each of you. If you, George, if you'll please pass that around.
Thank you.
So you see a recent, the problem we have with Generation Z with the abuse of, with the social media and so on. So Senator, Senator Brian Schatz of Hawaii, Democrat, just issued, so moved out of the Senate Committee, Commerce Committee Advances the Schatz Cruise Bipartisan Legislation to Keep Kids Safe, Healthy, and Off Social Media. We have a problem with Generation Z in that they're not employable, many of them because of the harms of brain rot and the lack of things. So there's a whole bunch of resources that need to go into working across the silos so that we have a way of helping our youth and improving it. This is an important book, it's called The Anxious Generation: How the Great Rewiring of Childhood is Causing an Epidemic of Mental Illness. Okay, this isn't something I'm making up, there's all kinds of books, the Surgeon General came out with things. The point is, is we need a city-wide Youth Commission to improve...
Nick, your time's up.
Oh, okay, well, please put it on the agenda, that's the second item, thank you very much, and it's dibsdigitalwellness.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're doing things a little different this evening, we're going to recess our Council meeting just for a bit, take, I think, five minutes or so, and we're going to head out to honor our Councilmember Cindy Tran, it's her birthday, we have a birthday cake for her. Just for the community to understand, we have an opportunity to do this, or we can have a little treat sent to our home to acknowledge our birthdays. And tonight, we're going to acknowledge Cindy's here at our Council meeting, so we're going to recess for just a few minutes, and we'll be back. So we're going to recess for just a few minutes, and we'll be back. Our cake. I think we're ready to finish this meeting. From the meeting held on the 11th. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn, and we will move to sanitary district. Please call roll.
Member Bredegum?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Doven?
Present.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Adistegi?
Here.
Vice President Tran?
Here.
And President Klaufenstein?
Here. We can move right into our consent items. Again, this is receive and file the minutes from November 26th and January 28th. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
And again, any matters from board members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and go back to our council agenda. And before our break, we already held a roll communication, so that moves us to our consent calendar items two through 11. If no one wants to pull any of these items, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Just a point of clarification, since we already voted on the housing authority appointments, we don't need to do that again, correct?
No, you do need to, because under state law, it's the city council that appoints to the housing authorities, so.
Understood. So as before, we have two applicants, Mrs. Carol Beckles and Mr. Tan Nguyen. Do I have a motion for these members? I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, that moves us on to items for consideration. Number 13, award a contract to CI Services for the Garden Grove City Hall Roof Replacement Project. I believe we have a staff report?
Yes, and Mr. Deputy Director Bill Murray is here to provide the report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez, Ms. Mayor, Mrs. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's city council is being asked to award a contract to CI Services Incorporated for the replacement of the roof at City Hall. In general, the roof replacement work will include, but is not limited to, the removal of loose gravel in preparation of the roof surface, the encapsulation of the existing roof by placing a seamless carpet of fiberglass, and then coating it with ceramic asphalt that's at least a quarter inch thick. The final product is Title 24 compliant, and it's a reflective roofing. All this work is to be completed at a cost of almost $375,000. Staff received and opened four bids earlier this year, and determined that CI Services Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder. Should council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in March and should be complete in a couple months. The project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for using the Building Rehabilitation Internal Service Fund. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Colleagues, any questions, comments? Any, a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, we're moving right along. Matters from my colleagues. We will start with District 6 this evening.
Hello, everyone. I hope everyone had a great past two weeks and had a happy Valentine's Day. We've had a lot of stuff going on here in Garden Grove in District 6. First, I want to congratulate our newly appointed Director of HR, Janie Lee, for being promoted to this wonderful position. I am excited to see what she's going to do during the rest of her tenure. She's already worked with the city of Garden Grove for so long, so congratulations. We really enjoyed your reception. I also want to congratulate the students at Garden Grove High School VSA for having a really fun and exciting Vietnamese culture night over at Donwash Auditorium last week. It was a really great time. It was a rainy, it was a rainy night, but their house was still packed. So congratulations and great job. I can tell that you guys worked really hard on that. We had a lot of conversations this week with regards to parking in District 6, so I want to thank all of the residents that reached out with regards to this, specifically the residents from Buena Clinton and from Jetty Street. There is a lot of work that I know we can continue to do to make sure that, you know, we're all being better neighbors, that we take care of each other, and also to make sure that we continue to travel safely within our city. So know that staff has been, you know, has been asked to look into some of the issues that have been presented by you guys, and hopefully we'll be able to start implementing some solutions. I also want to make sure that I let people know that we're going to have a resource fair at Santiago High School on March 1st in conjunction with the Office of Supervisor Sarmiento. I know my colleague, my council member Nguyen will be present there as well. And there's going to be a variety of community resources available, so I want to encourage folks to attend. Again, that's Saturday, March 1st at Santiago High School. Please join us and hopefully have a great day with the rest of our neighbors. I think that's it for me this week. Yeah.
Councilman?
I recently attended the Orange County Music and Arts Administrators Award Ceremony, which was a night that was dedicated to honoring the music and arts teachers in the county. I will gladly report that Garden Grove Unified had one of the largest recipients of awards, which is no surprise seeing the amazingly talented, how amazingly talented our students are here in our city. I especially look forward to the First Impression Arts Exhibit, which is when, which is when our downtown publicly displays students' artwork. This will be happening next month, so be on the lookout. I also had a great time meeting and catching up with so many local businesses at the Garden Grove Chamber Nixon Event. I attended alongside the city manager Philip and Cindy. I look forward to working more closely with the Chamber and the member businesses as time progresses. Last weekend, I attended alongside our mayor and Cindy the Gigi Pony Baseball Opening Ceremony right here in District 5. It was a heartwarming, it was heartwarming seeing the little athletes preparing themselves for a new season. I want to give a shout out to the entire board for the work that they do and wish the teams a successful season as well. I recently attended the Association of Vietnamese Language and Culture School Award Gala I recently attended the Association of Vietnamese Language and Culture School Award Gala alongside council member Cindy Tran, this gala was to recognize the educators and professionals who teach Vietnamese dual emergent program, the night was very fun, I saw my colleague Cindy sing in front and center, which was, she did really, really well, so kudos to you Cindy for making the night memorable and also want to wish you a happy birthday. Also want to let everybody know, I would like to invite you to our, the community, the community to attend the Santiago High School Community Fair this Saturday, March 1st from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there will be free resources for free dental and vision exams, free haircuts, and there will also be free daycare, I urge the community to take advantage of this event and swing on by, there will be, I will be there and Ariana will be there as well, so if you want to connect, this is also a way to connect in the community. Lastly, I had a meeting with Supervisor Vicente Sarmiento from the Orange County Board of Supervisors and his staffer which supports Garden Grove, her name is Rosemary Contreras, we had a great conversation regarding the, our mutual constituents, we both serve, and I look forward and look and working with his office to improve our overall well-being of Garden Grove and residents, especially in District Five. One of the matters I would like to have the staff look at is the partnership we have with our police department and the Orange County Healthcare Agency, especially for the mental health workers assigned to the Garden Grove PD, for the psychiatric emergency response team, otherwise known as PERT, the PERT program assigned a mental health care worker from the OCHCA to the PD, they ride along with our officers and respond to mental health crisis calls, currently, it is my understanding, our partnership only gives us one worker, only one, once a week, however, I would like to see this more towards having a clinician, more days a week like other jurisdictions do, if, of course, the county has the capacity for it, I know we have, be well, but this would also serve as a supplement to it, so please keep me posted. And that is all for me, thank you.
I yield my time, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm going to be a bit long today, so the first one, I just want to say thank to the Republic for the compost giveaway, its resident could get up to six bags of the compost, and I were able to get six, just like anyone else, I give two to my parents, one to my friend, one to religious person, one to my sister, et cetera, but anyway, what I want to say is that after the event, I got a lot of great compliments from the resident, and they were asking if we'd do that again, so for the resident out there, when we have the next event, we will public information on our city website, so please check the website if you're interested to get that. Second, I had a meeting with the Habitat, Mr. Valentine, on Valentine Day, so I have done, I have volunteered and support Habitat in the past when I was in the military, and so when I saw them at the event, we had that, we made that connection again, at the meeting, I have Lisa, our city manager, and Matt, our assistant city manager, in that meeting, and thank you to Lisa and Matt, they came up with some great idea what we can do to work together, the one, one project that we could think of was the one that we do, we were thinking about doing the cleanup at the tunnel between trash and Garden Grove Park, where the student go to school every day there, but the more detail will come, I would love to see an effort, a project for us to do cleanup and maybe do a mural or something like that, like a paint on the wall, just so that way, something nice, and also when the student go to that alley, it doesn't smell bad and look bad, et cetera, so looking forward to work more with our staff to come up with an idea what we can do to improve that area. Next item, council member, Munyaton already talked about the Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce did an awesome job, the room were packed, and thank to our staff for being there too, many of our staff was there entire time to the end, and we had a lot of fun time meeting our businesses and making connection with all the business, all the Chamber of Commerce, so I appreciate your effort for coming to support also my council member there, you know, Philip and Jacenia, like you said, we have fun. Next one is the Garden Go Pony event, thanks to the volunteer, the coach, the little athlete that they were so proud and so happy, ready for the game, and afterward, they have a little food thing, so council member Jacenia walking around with a student taking the picture and recording, so that was a great idea, just to have student to see what our council do and, you know, get to experience that with us, so I'm looking forward to do similar thing like you. Next one, I got a chance to meet with artified student, the art club from Lakinta High School, so every Monday would go to the Brookhaven nursing home to do art with the resident there, so they just want me to pass the invitation to anyone, any student who want to do community service, please come there to have fun with the resident and also do something good for the community. Last week, I got to do a tour with the SRT, with our police in relate to the homeless, I know that we have one guest, one speaker, one resident that come here talk a lot about that corner, at the corner of Gilbert and Chapman at the flood channel, and so this time I got to do the tour, went down to the channel, to the tunnel, and looked inside, that is very scary, and like he said, there were needle, there were trash, a lot of things out there, but then seeing that, we actually appreciate more of the work that our policemen doing every single day, they have to face with thing that we might not like, and, you know, not just that, last, at the last council meeting, we have a couple of resident came here and talk about the trash along the freeway, I went there and it took them over four men cleaning up that area, more than two day, just to pick up the trash and, you know, put in the bag and throw them away, so the message from our policemen to the resident is that when you see something like that, let us know, so that way we would have that cleaned up, we don't wait until when it pile up so much, and it take a lot more effort to do the cleanup and it doesn't look good, right, so please speak up when you see trash or thing that need to be addressed. I have, I still have more item, but I want to make sure that I bring this up, the part issue, so from the soccer team earlier, they mentioned about our part, and I also received many of the feedback from our resident, different team, not just this team, but this from team, about the condition of the Garden Grove Park, that's one of the item that when I first start to become a council member, I would love to work with the city, with elected official up there, and the resident come up with an idea or somehow we find a fund to, to do something for that part, so I did, I brought that to couple of the council member here, so today I'm kind of bring up that idea again, if any of the council here interested in working with me on that project, please let me know, I talked to our city attorney, if we have more than three council member, then we have to bring it here for discussion, but if less than three, then we would be able to work together and work with the community, and probably will come up with a project similar like council member, this for the strawberry scripture, so more information will come, but I really want to, I know it takes so long, because it's a big project and it be quite a lot of money, million of dollar, so where can you find a million of dollar, and so everybody need money, and so we have to come up with idea outside the box, and I think council member did that for the strawberry scripture, so I'm going to do the same thing, I will work with the council or the staff, and will come up with a way to invite all the resident or sponsor, all the people out there that want to support the city, and we will come up with a plan to make that happen. Last but not least, thank you so much to everyone today, the team, the staff, everyone the council member here for the birthday celebration, I did not expected that, so, but I do want a cake, I didn't expect that many people came, and congratulations to Chin for the HR director, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Klumpenstein, last two week, to me was busy, fun, fun because it's Valentine, I hope everybody enjoy like I do. And it's also busy because there are many issue that residents actually contact me, one of that, I will only mention one that I have discussed with manager Lisa Kim and Matt and Sean about this issue, and we did have a very fruitful solution so far, the issue was the street lighting, many of our inside street was pretty dark, so the resident really want to have some kind of lighting, and so that, I did discuss with the city manager, and we come up with a few solution, and hopefully after I got more data, I will talk directly with them, with the resident, and find out if what we can do. Another issue that my college already mentioned is about, we did attend the Garden Grove Chamber Nexus, to me it was fun, because I always associate with Chamber of Commerce, always, for like 10 years before, and like to do that, because to me, small business successful is very important for any city governing success, we have success business in our city, then we have our city success, thank you.
Thank you. Senator Brightigam?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, a few things, and I think Councilman Tran had actually mentioned it, you know, the winds came through here, not as bad as LA got, but we, we got some pretty substantial winds, no fires to speak of, thank goodness, the OCFA does a great job being staged and ready to combat any of that stuff as it comes out, but what happens, every time the winds blow, the trash blows, and the freeways end up getting lined with trash, and exits get, you know, and, so, I'm hoping staff can reach out to Caltrans and maybe have them take a look at the 22 and the 405 freeways and exits exiting into Garden Grove along those venues, because I've noticing a lot of trash buildup from that wind event that it's looking kind of unsightly. A constant, well, a continuing issue I get a lot is people not certain who's in charge of what, you know, I'll get a text or an email or something on social media, hey, this traffic light is out, and it happens to be here, is that Westminster, is that Garden Grove, is that Caltrans, is that, whose light is that, right? And I, and I tell people, look, you don't need to know, you just download the Garden Grove app, you take a picture of it or whatever you want to do, and you can report it on that app, if it's not the city of Garden Grove, it'll get forwarded to the proper city or entity that handles that problem. So, you know, you don't need to try to play detective or whatever and figure, figure out, so I recommend everyone, download the Garden Grove app, it makes it so easy to report issues, it, it creates transparency and responsibility on our staff, because by doing the app, you actually get a tracking number, and with that tracking number, you'll also get periodic updates as to the status of your issue, your complaint, and so, and then it enables our council here to hold staff accountable, you know, I got this tracking number on this date, it's been two months and nothing's happened, okay, now we're armed with the information to fight for you, and say, hey, why is this guy waiting, why is this woman waiting two months to get this issue addressed, right? If you call, you don't get the tracking number, so the app is really a better way to go, it's free, you can download it on any of your phones, Garden Grove, city of Garden Grove, download the app, and it's really simple to use, I think they just implemented pinning to it, so if you don't know where you're at, you can hit the thing and it'll, it'll mark it for you, a geomapping type of thing, so, anyway, I'd like to kind of encourage everyone, if you live in the city of Garden Grove, if you work in the city of Garden Grove, or if you're here just to play, download that app, it, it makes life really easy and, we can address your concerns a lot more expeditiously. Last week, weekend, we had a neighborhood walk in District One, it was pretty good, I think we had about five or six members of the community came out, we had a lot more staff there, staff came out in full force, thank you, everybody who was able to make it. I did get a few comments after that, you know, and I do think, we got a lot of folks over, let's say 50, 60 years old, and maybe they don't want to go out and hike three or four miles, so I think something that you guys might want to consider when it rolls into your area, maybe a coffee is a better option, you get more participation, you know, have coffee and donuts and just have, you know, that might be a better turnout, so to speak, up to you guys however you want to do it, it was nice, it was good, we got to see parts of the community, and staff got, I think, got a firsthand look at, at some of the issues in the area, so that was, that was probably good for that as well. Lastly, happy birthday to Cindy Tran, she finally turned 21, so you can legally have a beer. And that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you to all my council colleagues, it's great to hear your reports and to see that you're out in the community, working hard and helping the residents, so thank you for your robust reports on what you've been up to in the past couple of weeks since our last council meeting, and thank you to staff as well for always hearing out all of our concerns and helping us with the issues that we're facing in the community, so I appreciate it very much. City Attorney Omar Sandoval, do we have need for a closed session this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a closed session item on a closed session agenda, and so before you adjourn the meeting, we need to adjourn to closed session.
Very good, and city manager, anything to report this evening?
Nothing, Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right, we'll stand adjourned to closed session.